Hi everybody. This is a fun panel and uh, we're trying to make a bad time. So we're gonna try and have a hard soften then. If you have any further questions, you can always direct them on email or Facebook to our group. Before we get to our panel, there's a few sort of announcements and ground rules first. And this is pretty important, on behalf of the ex, that you respect people's privacy concerns and not take photographs or video. Uh, yeah, we don't think we're doing it yet, so that's the early. Uh, second, and this should go without saying, uh, fascism and biggers are not welcome here. Um, if you are one, don't be here. It costs, it costs, uh, um, yeah, it costs us a little range, uh, probably. Uh, our security team will escort people out who are disruptive or break those rules. Uh, so please help, uh, I don't think they even do it, so that's good. Uh, format here is this, you're gonna have ten minutes, so I'll leave you at our head. Uh, and how that's like the way, my manager, he was our first speaker. Uh, Chipper Way has spent over forty years studying and writing about radical movements. He was an academic research associate in Somerville. He is a co-author, a law student, and writes classic book, Writing Focus, which is deeply spoken for. His new book is called Trolling Democracy in the United States: A Raven to the Right, which is a headed collection to empower people to write self-approbation. Good luck with your work.
Uh, other years I worked for a Canadian professor who gave me a stopwatch and said, "I'm going to work." Yeah, now I still keep it. No, I think everything can be developed on, but I was obsessed and I was sure I had to manage it. I mean, not in fact, you obviously know what the negative substitution is, you never quite, I was paying to do this. So, um, in turn, we all have, so I've talked a little bit about the need for a rise, for a way possible because of the threat to so many different types of people and groups. Uh, we have multiple opponents, uh, one percent power, we have business, nationalized business, we have a lot of people who are public and they are very poor. We have ideologies, we have a lot of white supremacists, anti-racism, Islamism, Nazism, xenophobia, etc. And then there's the media, families, Mexicans, Americans, Islam, Islamism, obviously people of color are seen as being anti-racist, but it's a lot of the same. You know, because they're not the real people. The real people, when you've got a white populist, are people who are accessible to the regular people. Now, what that means is those people are either white, or messed up and beaten up in the streets, or they're happy, or they're just jealous. So it never ends with, it's, you know, it's, it gets worse and worse. Um, I think it's really important to fight the concrete, the obvious, and the human rights for every of our self-acceptance. And it includes the white, the human rights, the people that control, the people who are being wrong, and so that, you know, it's not to be everybody against the mosque. Now, it doesn't mean if somebody's being sexist or homophobic or racist, that you can't fall out and you can't, and you're welcome to be there for, in their face. Uh, but you should acknowledge that in places like those children who are right now. And so that's the difference, is that there are things that are not acceptable. Um, so nobody gets thrown under the bus, I don't think, I need to go around people who believe life is horrible, I'm very tired. And it's a morality play, it's liquid, you know, you get on, obviously, but it's a morality play. These people in the white world, who gets thrown out, does anybody get thrown out? Why don't people make decisions about what they'd like to do with an injured person and then surprise guests at the white world, as we do a bunch later? Um, so that's in the government, you have some people in your neighborhood who can come over to watch some, uh, you can bring it to any place where you have a term type of organization or whatever. So, um, so, or, or, like, I don't know, I have to say, sorry, go back for you. So that you have basically different organizations that are not too concerned about fascism, but should be, and show the light. So who, who wants to protect everybody except the real people for, for that, that fascism is, by the way. The thing you need to know about fascism is that President and Cassin, and part of other scholars, like, say, and theorists, and writers, and writers, they have taken the decision over twenty years that white, white populist rhetoric is a form of state capitalism, essentially, that begins by fascism. So fascism is the most militant and murderous form of rights and politics. What we have in America now, and white populists, so you and I and everyone else who's been over this has to act against the actual appearance of fascism, which is what the White House has got this, these reports to write. They go together, fascism is, it's two together, so, fascism, and the others, by the time we realize that white fascism is too late. Uh, so we have to even go through the intensive antibiotics. We have to be part of the, whenever I go to the city theater stage, I sit down there, I hustle, and I make myself have a conversation with the dog, or talking about what's going on. But I don't like anything I say. I don't know, it's, you know, our, our people, you know, that talk, because it bothers you. And then you sit up, and they talk for a while, and then you can have a conversation. Don't give them a chance to talk for a while, it's not a good conversation. And what's fun is a lot of people say, "Well, you know," and you probably need to put on a show, you're supposed to be there, and if you have a conversation, don't sit there and say, "It's not a mistake." And you said, "It's not a mistake," it's an issue, it's not, who wants that, and then, well, a lot of people, you know. Uh, ethical, I don't know, it depends on what the ethical response is, you know, I think, it, it does, in fact, I think, that's relative to the least, that not this person who has a chance of being a Republican, and no other person, you know, for the public. Uh, so, uh, another thing, to maintain international solidarity with all things, like, you were mentioning, genocide. And to me, that includes obviously, pirates of the right hand, but, um, particularly, it's highly difficult from, um, sadist populists. Because it's like populists who's like treating his home or whatever, so like sadistic populists, they're populists. I can't remember that term anymore, it actually works for people. Uh, eco-socialism, uh, if we can't maintain political systems in an earthless economy, so somewhere we have to, in one, that we can be heard and build awareness, and ecology across all aspects.
And on to our show, President Trump. It's hard for us to know. That day, you're pretty hurt, so.
I don't know what you're there for.
But having the right to hear that the cops aren't gonna save us. Why can't they, God, they're gonna save us? Only we can save us, they got us. And it's just moment of hope. The law only can save us, for God, we're gonna save us. And that's, that's politics, I think, um, was as politics as well, as politics as all here. But I also came up with the light, sort of, of Austin, right, this thing. Knowing you're poor, you're working, and you're queer, you're outside, like, we're just part of life, this is part of life, you know, that's almost what walking for you. You have a hug, another love, but you're not gonna call that, because it's a problem you're brought in, so you're never saying, yeah, true, they are helping childrens. And that is a comfort, white place. Uh, and to me, like, any fascist, oh. No, he just put, he said, ignore. I'm not putting this in for, I must say, Washington, dying. And it's very personal, it's very cruel. Uh, because when they say, just ignore them, just ignore them, well, they go home and they need to live their lives, just ignore them. They go home and hate each other, just ignore them. But we can't confront them on the street, where else can we confront them? We can't confront them like, organize, how can we confront their homes? How can we tell other people to confront them? And it's just kind of like, personal, it has to be. Politically, politically, I think, just like that very important, uh, market, we need to, but thank you, but thank you for coming back. I've noticed, I want to thank you, um, the festival. But we need a deep, broad, possible motion, using our tactics to stop them. Because I would have to do a history of that, organizing, lots of organizations, but we get to know each other, and to learn how each other will work, and to learn how they work together. It's like it's work, I play lots of work, not just, no shame, no bells, I know that shame. Uh, no, it is season, okay, the, right, the days, all the sad things are working well. So people say, just ignore them on the street, that's totally all the street. We give power to each other, we exchange contract information, we give power to exchange information about us, no, not yet. Can't do that. Uh, so just have a way to have, we don't want us from fascists, we can't allow those basically, if I gave them a platform, and not confront them, we're not gonna fit, we'll love them, and that's why, they also, I, I still, this has happened here, nobody has other vast capital, there's streets, and most of us have to act for this, pressure the businesses, not providing space for it. Because as lucky as we have, this group is of organizing, it's a lot, well, I mean, we share something, apart, we have insurance, we're organizing, that shared space is what a lot of them prefer. So also having that second aspect, making sure you have a secondary insurance space, share with their parents, like, that work, or your family, their kids. Uh, and there's, there's organizing, uh, and then, and then, I think, fascist organizing, it's better than errors, uh, for the bigger fights. Because, you know, religious terrorism, uh, featured around, all these persons, they're the true victims. Uh, we're really lucky in some ways, when there's people who do something, try to make it happen. Then we have the, it's the cops, and, uh, there's, there's just, just, that different places are operating, and they also, from the state, what we, I would say, uh, we've got, where is that, we support, start just mentioning, because they are people helping. They, out of that place, they're to attack the dead for us, and they, we have to, that's something like, a lot of times, they fail. Uh, but we, uh, we got a lot of things, we have to build a broad vision, where you know, there are certain things are uncomfortable, certain, this poor, that is, you know, on the street, but we can add around that, and allow those tactics, and still have the respect, and, and still have these vast, uh, streets, or, or, uh, that creates a foundation, and which can build, or these large, complicated fights, we do have to rely on some of those things. And that pushes us, or what this part, we have, there are figures, we have a base on it, like, this is where we draw the line. That makes us stronger. And I can trust, like, I will say, you know, a couple years ago, I remember a lot of the side, the side, people, which I had, I had social, I didn't know that, that was very, um, very scary. You should be more to believe, if you want to fight for it, and it's so hot, it feels like internal violence, that you can split your creature. The bigger picture is that, yeah, like, white, 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 and a right here, it's very, that's the one. And he's the most powerful man that I've seen. And he has emboldened, but most of the left have conceived, growing, for the past ten years. You don't have time left for my thoughts, for us. We never have time, especially for that, my thoughts. And I can believe, I can believe, I can believe that, like, and, and, you think that you can't accept such laws. I think that future is possible, I know it really is that hard, but. I think we're never gonna get, you know, fight for it, you ask, you can't get it, and hardly, the street, the market, fascist, to make that, now. And future does not work. Thank you.
Sarah. Um, next up, we have Kitty, who uses she/her and say that pronouns, uh, she's a member of the Boston chapter of P S A, and a speaker.
Hi, so, Sarah, it was so long, the awesome thing to us, did the speakers before her, and I go with the same thing, let's start, so, I can talk, but, uh, to get, so, and she can sit down. Please, please, yeah. Um, so, Sarah, could you one thing about this, about fascist organizing, about, what this, about the street level is organizing, how organizing? But, uh, one of the reasons that I was asked to talk on this panel, um, to, 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 to introduce her, is because I was at the counter, I was supposed to be original, United the Right, uh, Charlotte level, and also, uh, United, very, excuse me, past weekend, uh, and I, uh, I, 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 I do the first thing, uh, so, that's what I was doing there. And for me, um, part of what, well, sort of, first, first of all, last year, um, I, 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 I was there for what I think, it was all major segments, uh, of the United the Right, so, the, uh, the, the rally, let's see, the, um, the, 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 the street ball next morning, uh, heart attack. Uh, and, but, uh, it, it, this, one, one thing that I should have, uh, is the, because I was really, interesting period of the balance, that day, it's because I came, I came back from that, and, then, everything was a full year in Austin, preparing for, uh, catering to the, uh, Boston Free Speech Rally, and, Boston Free Speech, there's this part of the, really, like, uh, that's, I thought, a lot of, uh, really, really dogged, we say, it's, it's, that's, uh, and, and you take the word, they've always tried, they don't like, be, it's, it's, with, United the Right, so, for obvious reasons, it's, it's, it's an aster, and they always try to disavow that, just because it's really like, that word, disavow, except, uh, so, it makes me, uh, um, they, they, you know, they, they say that, I think, this is how it happened, and, and, and then it's okay, but it's always disavowable, because, one of the speakers that was going to be at that rally, um, who does, who did this, was also, who was, uh, also, he was also at United the Right, and he used to be the second in command, that made the, uh, the order all night, to Kyle Chapman, who is the founder of this, 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 Boston, uh, despite, what they, three thousand dollars play, uh, and, uh, so, there, there was always that connection, uh, Boston Free Speech, always had a very heavy presence of anti-comm, uh, anti-communist action, I think, first. Notice that in May, twenty seventeen, Boston Free Speech, that just rally, they were out in their gear, which, uh, and, 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 sort of, looked everywhere, which, then I also saw them walking in, uh, at United, uh, that, I guess, the anti-comm people, uh, they don't look pretty, uh, sporting, uh, that were really, don't, you know, armed, right, and, uh, for that, August twenty seventeen rally, uh, they, they were talking to, through, uh, anti-commists, sort of, really good, uh, and, so, that, that connection, and, and I, also, it's security, for Richard Spencer's, uh, speech, in, in, for, uh, so, like, that connection was always there, and now, with the United the Right Two, uh, Jody Ball, who's a Proud Boys, in New York City, uh, in, in Brooklyn, he, he co-sponsored this, this rally, in New York City, on the pack, and he, um, he's worked with, with, for, he, Boston Free Speech, at the Proud Boys rally, and, um, tried to get a degree, had a degree upstairs, or, you know, uh, but he, he was a speaker at United the Right Two, this past weekend, uh, and, in fact, this, this, this rally, had, uh, multiple people who were in the, 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 uh, United the Right planning, uh, attending their rally, as well as the speaker, so it's always, it's always been disavowable, because, they, they disavow the hard, uh, this, this, here. Anyway, I, I, they, they came back from that, and then, you get, later, the whole Boston Memorial was finalized, uh, and, and to, uh, the Joel, for that, it's, uh, you, I should, I work with it, you should, that, um, organized the Joel, for that, uh, and then, it's, it's, they're, with the Boston, and, it turned, a little nervous, after, after United the Right, but it turned out to be great, so the counter, that just showed up, of course, that there's a lot of people, these violence against, some of them, I remember that, I treated some of it, uh, but it was very effective, starting the momentum here, enforcing the two, the, the, the numbers showed what we can do. And then, they was, that they, they did start to be, uh, they didn't run any actions, or sense that, they don't, they don't have the numbers that they used to, but they ought to, that's the whole organizing work, that Sarah was talking about, is that they're trying to, to meet each other, they're trying to go, trust, actions, um, and, we've seen recently, some of you, maybe, followed the various needs, Portland, Oregon, of the Patriot Fair Rally there, with, sort of, Proud Boys, and all that, um, and just, like, violence against fascists, someone, you agree, of, from, street fascists, and then, more recently, violence against them from police, because, they, they're always in their mind, like, I've seen over, over, the police, we give thousands of missiles to street fascists, and they want to, to, left, or, or, spend, they'll, they'll take their side, like, I, 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 I've had, I always take the side of street fascists, who were, literally, like, running to, to , you know, like, on, on the spot, so, that's, like, that, um, they're not helpful. So, um, if you've seen, if you've seen, uh, I mean, there's a report, like, the, um, Patriot Fair was one of the original, like, constituent organizations, of this, that's on the website, uh, and, like, what exists in Portland is, in my opinion, what, that the, the, street fascists always wanted to see here, um, and I think that had the workers not come out, who, who, that, that we did last August, I don't think they would be much, much closer to that here now, like, that's what they want to be, and people don't always understand it, because it's a way of being, of, of, or, right, that presents, and, that tries to present as being not over, if they're not walking around, very, uh, and such, but, like, sometimes they do, but, like, they're trying to be more, like, public friendly, but then, they have all their, say, helicopter, uh, but, like, they don't obviously do their job, pretending, to be modern, but, like, change a lot of America's, what, 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 like, so they don't necessarily see that, uh, and they don't, they get confused when they see the Proud Boys who are not fighting, it's actually Proud Boys who are not fighting, and they don't see how, like, there's a lot of different axes of oppression that go into these ideologies, that they have messy coalitions, just like the left, uh, like, society, and , and, 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 that, those are all, um, two, like, different parts of, um, their coalition. And so, I think that, like, a lot of people have said that, oh, the alt-right died after the first, I think, one, like, look at that, that United the Right Two, was, still, it was because they, because hundreds of hours of organizing against it, didn't have a, that thing, but the, the, as a, the worst part has, like, run into those problems, I think the current, the one, the trouble, organizing, has been unsettled, um, and so, I think that is something that we have to, organizing against it, we also have to be able to, uh, this, uh, this, because it is ultimately connected to both those larger structures of oppression, like, police and criminal corporations, and also to the ability of learning, experiencing, uh, Nazi, uh, for, for, like, for, for, like, Nazis, and, and lost this, way, uh, in some ways, it's, it's, and, and, I'm done with that.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Our last speaker on the panel is Michael Rompino, uses his pronouns and organizes with the Boston chapter of International Social Organization. Uh, sorry, Michigan. Thank you to the entire panel, through all, um, comrades, in this struggle, and I just want to say, that goes for everybody in this room, and also, I, I want to, for sure, he and, he's one of these panels, touched on, is, which is the need for a broad coalition, by just amount of people involved, that, that is possible, um, a broad, uh, depth of organizational, uh, uh, representation, and said, that's something, I agree, you're saying. I just, um, I wanted to sort of say, it's just worth thinking about exactly what the alt-right is, and what is it, you know, we sort of know what they stand for, we, we have a sense of some of their leading personalities, Richard Spencer, but what do they do, their, like, mission right now, in, in, in the United, in the United States? Now, right, you know, obviously, the white, uh, the white, the white supremacists, you know, Nazis, like, I mean, this is something that goes, this is something that's embedded in American, uh, in American society, but there is a new iteration of it, they're, they're younger, they're sat, they're sat here, and they're experimenting with different ways to, to build what, what I think is national, the ability to mobilize people that will be in the streets, fighting these violence, I think that is essentially what the alt-right represents, all the way from the hardcore young Nazis to resist Marxists, who like to pretend that they are just interested in free speech, uh, I just want to think about that, if the party ever got, like, strong enough, you would never hear anything again about free speech, right? That is, that person, the person that they're gonna do, they're against free speech, cynically, uh, they're operators, and they're completely desirous of their lives. One thing that struck me, and, uh, nobody else, uh, that, that point, uh, Kitty was speaking about, um, how they disavow, they could disavow things, Jason Cutsoir, who organized both the United the Right rallies, he's talking about how, um, he's not a Nazi, we're just, like, you know, we're advocates, we're white people, we're not in favor of violence, last year, the immediate after, uh, I read, he killed, he celebrated your death, literally celebrated your death on Twitter, and said, this is payback time for all the victims of Tommy, he said it was some insane, zebra dream truth that he put together, but this is somebody who celebrated your murder, and this is, I think this is what the alt-right is, they want to be able to mobilize activists in people's streets, they want to be able to carry out violence against left-wing rallies, they want to attack, uh, oppressed people, they want to attack the left, they have a big picture goal of smashing up trade unions, I mean, this is what they represent, and just because they're small, doesn't mean that they shouldn't be taken very seriously, um, you know, they're five inches old, if they're a subscription here, that the left, I think, we should wing them, push them out every single time, because what Sarah said, that's so important, they use these types of street confrontations, they're not, they don't show up to take life, they don't, they show up to confront us, so they can bring in new recruits, you know, and, and sort of crucible violence, that is how they recruit, and that's how they build, and that's how they strengthen their organization, just because they're small, they're down, and they're not, I wanted to say that, um, we should take very, very seriously, anytime they attempt to, anytime they try to organize their own rally, which is what they're doing in the eighteenth, or anytime they, you know, they show up to a number of, like, sort of progressive demonstrations in Boston, uh, from things as big as the, the Second Amendment Women's March, to, I mean, they, I mean, they just show up, and, and, we have to take that very seriously, to understand what they represent as a political, uh, foundation. So, um, sorry, I, I just want to say, it is worth thinking about where we were a year ago, I mean, a year ago, like, last spring, into the summer, like, where we were, uh, in terms of their, 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 you know, Trump, was, obviously, he was celebrated by people, like, you know, alt-right, human, current, it's sort of explosion, or, sort of, mainstream, Richard Spencer went viral, there was immediate sensation, and, in the spring, and, and, the summer, I mean, sort of, the climax of this was in Charlottesville, they were, they were able to possess hundreds of far-right, extreme fighters, in city, out of city, in our country, they did, I mean, they did, everywhere, this was, they had a real sense of momentum, they had a real sense of purpose, and I don't like people that are, like, last spring, they went on a red page, like, they, they attacked people, they beat people, and honestly, they did that very, very, so, just, again, down, out, and it's, in terms of, in terms of where you're talking about, reaching, because they're still, I mean, you look at a place like Portland, they're able to mobilize hundreds of people in, again, full combat here, it's a fight for life, this is how they build, this is how they recruit, this is how they strengthen their forces, and, um, Kitty said something really important about resist Marxism, the connection to, uh, Patriot Fair, the workplace, um, the leader, they're one of the underground leaders of resist Marxism here in Boston, Marcus Hating, showed up here in Boston, after smaller, he's in, you know, Lake Close, he's talking about free speech, there's a picture of him, for, for, from Portland, dressed like he's at the United the Right rally last year, full combat here, so he's, again, there's several, there are lies, you can't, face down, depends on what we're saying, uh, they're building, there's a national connection, build national connections, and you build to strengthen, so, I, they're trying to go. You have quite a lot of, yes. There's, there's, globally, nationally, internationally, um, you know, they think of us as a very, and I think it's a very serious movement, that wants, like, can, can really, like, power, but, yeah, that is one thing, um, you know, maybe it's something different, but, so, it was a year ago, we were sort of, people were, uh, there wasn't, like, a big decisive, a low against, and then, you know, obviously, what happened in Charlottesville a year ago, happens, and, you know, that was, we're on the torch, like, I was watching footage of that, and it, it was, like, I was watching, it was, like, this, maybe, not that long ago, and this fellow, in the White House, is still there, I mean, what did he say, in, in, last year, maybe, he said, he blaming the other left, there's bad people on both sides, this year, he's got, he can have all eyes, no specific combination of what's premises.
I can't even correct him.
Sure.
He didn't say, uh, he said, they're blind people.
Finally, yeah, right, I mean, so, so, okay, they, they can only turn out twenty people now, so what, the president, literally, is a fellow traveler, but who, and offers them political cover, it's a president who follows immigrants' animals, he's, I mean, but, the ease with which the president throws a, a disgusting, racist language, and political intervention, tell us all we need to know about the very turbulent terrain of the alt-right is potentially operating on, um, down, but not, we have to really make, make this focus on, as a political force. And Boston happened last year, and it broke, at moments, I, you know, the estimates, twenty thousand, forty thousand, there was tens of thousands who showed up immediately after what happened, uh, what happened in Charlottesville, and it had a very demoralizing effect here in Boston, they were running, which was amazing, um, and, in the, we, 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 they canceled, they're really, all these, one, a great rally is scheduled around the country, and they all have canceled, like, the, the, because there was a sense of, oh, my God, look, we, you know, this, this just happened in Boston, this, this, this wave of people just ran aside, like, we can recruit, we're under intense, after the president, or, this intense pressure, so they, so they, they, they were, they were, they were, they were, they were built a free, uh, sting to the left, uh, and they did, they, they, in the fall, they tried to force, like, the traditional, the workers, started to say, okay, maybe we should retreat from the large local cities, and go into this, you know, small, like, intensive, maybe we should target Appalachia, but they lived there, too, they were badly immobilized, apparently, in downtown, I'd say, were badly immobilized there, um, so, yeah, there, there was a downward trend, but again, what, what we've seen there, gaining some of their strength, uh, when abolish ICE, emerged as a second hashtag against the child detention centers, some of, they were, like, high style, it came instead of around ICE offices around the country, and Patriot Front, which was the organization, they changed the name, they were the organization that, who ran, who ran, who got, in Charlottesville, they've been attacking, but, you have to understand, you know, it's, it's been, it's been, uh, it's been hard for them to recruit, and it's been uneven, but they have, they feel more confident to attack, than, attack these types of situations, and here in Boston, you know, their, their, their pushes for all, uh, mobilization, uh, on the eighteen, so, you know, I'm pretty much, uh, yeah, okay, I just want to, um, I want to say that, they really, they pushed them, one thing, which is political confrontation against them, which is, you know, I think, just basically, the city is so important, and we do have a real responsibility, any time they, they turn out, which is, and really try to smash up their, smash up their confidence, demoralize, and, and, each and every time, um, what Kitty said, they want, what happened, we're, 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 they want to go from twenty people here in Boston to that, would we rather deal with them when there's three hundred of them, and they'll, and they'll walk around in combat here, or, or, we'd rather crush, we'd rather crush them if we do that, I'll take the latter option, so I just want to say, I'll just, I think, everyone here, please, on Saturday, bring some people.